Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order the September Work Session of the University of Minnesota Board of Regents. As you know, we're using this format to delve more deeply into select topics and engage in dialogue as a board. That's part of the reason why we are in this room, which is more conducive to conversation. With us today to provide background to inform our discussion are Executive Vice President and Provost Rachel Croson, Vice Provost and Dean of Undergraduate Education Raj Singh, and Vice President for Enrollment Management Gregory Sneed, to provide an overview and framework for the university's tuition reciprocity agreements. Provost Croson, would you like to start?
Thank you, Chair Mayron and members of the board. I want to introduce my co-presenters for this session, who have together replaced Vice Provost Bob McMaster in leading our undergraduate enterprise. It takes two exceptionally talented individuals to replace one Bob McMaster. Earlier this morning, you met our new Vice Provost and Dean for Undergraduate Education, Raj Singh. It's my great pleasure to introduce you to our new Vice Provost for Enrollment Management, Greg Sneed. Vice Provost Sneed has 20 years of admissions and enrollment experience, including in the University of California system. He comes to us from Dennison University in Ohio, where he served as Vice President of Enrollment Management. With that, I will turn the presentation over to the team.
Thank you, Chair Mayron and members of the board. Reciprocity is the program designed to offer residents or otherwise decreased tuition, a resident tuition or otherwise decreased tuition compared with a non-resident rate to residents of another state. It is designed to benefit the citizens of neighboring states by affording them access to more educational choice at a lower cost. The exact tuition charge is dictated by the specifics of the agreements and varies somewhat based on the agreement signed by the relevant states. Tuition levels relevant for Minnesota students and Minnesota institutions are detailed at the Office of Higher Education website, the links to which are provided in your docket. The reciprocity agreements that we will focus on today are the State of Minnesota agreements with Wisconsin, North Dakota, and South Dakota, which was in force until earlier this year. The State of Minnesota has a more limited agreement with the Canadian province of Manitoba and a very limited agreement with Iowa. The university has participated in other reciprocity programs and also has independently set tuition rates at times in ways that have a similar impact as reciprocity agreements, and we will discuss those also in the presentation. While reciprocity programs differ significantly, they benefit students and their families, the costs of these programs are often borne by the universities and the states themselves. Some of these costs are direct and are captured by interstate payments. Most of the costs borne by the university are opportunity costs, and that is the cost of not having an opportunity to charge a higher tuition to a student who might otherwise Tuition reciprocity is now more than half a century old in Minnesota. It was originally part of Governor Wendell Anderson's Minnesota miracle agenda. And the original 1973 agreement states that the purpose of tuition reciprocity is the mutual improvement of educational advantages for the residents of this state and other states and provinces with whom agreements are made. It is also designed to avoid program duplication across states. For example, University of Minnesota, University of Wisconsin, Madison, does not offer an undergraduate degree in architecture or aerospace engineering, while University of Minnesota Twin Cities does. In turn, they offer an undergraduate degree in legal studies, in real estate, in social work that we do not. This can be especially beneficial to students interested in fields of studies that have a lower level of general interest. The slide in front of you shows a timeline of the reciprocity agreements between Minnesota and other states. As you can see, until recently, these agreements have been persistent, and their coverage has been increasing over time. What started as a limited agreement between the states of Minnesota and Wisconsin in 1967 mushroomed into a full-fledged agreement in 1973. Soon after, agreements with North Dakota, South Dakota, and the Canadian province of Manitoba were signed. You will also notice that these agreements have been renegotiated a few times by the states involved. Very recently, South Dakota withdrew from the agreement with Minnesota, and we'll discuss this and the implication of that withdrawal later in the presentation. With that historical perspective, I'd like to turn over the presentation to Vice Provost Sneed to discuss enrollment patterns of students between reciprocity states.
Thank you, Chair Mayron and members of the board. Although I'm no here to the U, I understand that the Regents have seen this map before. It shows undergraduate student enrollment at four-year schools using data from iPads classified by state of residence. Although Minnesota is a net exporter of students, it is also important to consider the different populations of the states when interpreting these numbers. A more detailed table in your docket shows that in fall 2022, for students enrolling in four-year institutions as new freshmen within a year of graduating from high school, about 11% of students from Minnesota attend a school in Wisconsin, while 8% of students from Wisconsin attend a school in Minnesota. So about 7%, give or take, of students in Minnesota attend a school in North Dakota, while 10% of North Dakotans are coming over here to Minnesota. And finally, 3% of students from Minnesota attend a school in South Dakota, while 5% of students from South Dakota come to Minnesota. So relative to state populations, we are a bit more balanced in our importing and exporting with reciprocity states than the raw numbers might suggest. There is one particular statistic that is worth noting on that table. Compared with other states, fewer than 55% of Minnesota students who attend a four-year college do so in Minnesota. That's compared with 70 to 75% in our neighboring states.
Can we move on to the next slide? So just so we understand how this slide works, you've got the maroons going down and the gold going up. Can you just explain what it is we're seeing on this slide? Put together, Minnesota has this kind of arch gold, and I don't know what it means.
Chair Mayron, members of the board. So the arch gold is students who graduate from Minnesota high schools who stay at Minnesota, go to four-year Minnesota universities, not just the U, all four-year Minnesota universities. The gold bars that are going up are students from Minnesota who go to those states, and the maroon bars, did I get that backwards? Sorry, go from those states to Minnesota, and the maroon bars going down are students from Minnesota who go to those states. And the ones that are hatched are ones that are part of the reciprocity agreement.
So just looking at then Wisconsin, can you just, just so we're clear, interpret what the maroon and the gold arrows mean?
Yes, Chair Mayron. So 3,258 high school graduates from Minnesota chose to attend a four-year institution in Wisconsin within a year of their graduation. And similarly, 2,366 high school graduates from Wisconsin chose to attend a four-year institution in Minnesota within a year of their graduation.
Which one is Wisconsin?
3258, 2,366. There you go.
Just don't.
All right.
Thank you.
So the previous data on that previous slide were for all four-year institutions, as Provost Croson said, but what about the University of Minnesota campuses in particular? As seen in your docket, about 13% of students enrolled in a University of Minnesota campus are from a reciprocity state, and the percentage is the same when considering just the Twin Cities campus as well. Note that the financial impacts of participating in reciprocity agreements are different at our different campuses. Crookston and Rochester do not differentiate between resident and non-resident tuition. And starting in fall 2024, Duluth began a single tuition rate for everyone in Midwestern states, including these reciprocity states. Thus, the financial implications of reciprocity are primarily seen on the Twin Cities and Morris campuses, with considerably larger numbers at the Twin Cities. All right, more graphs. I'm a graph guy. So let's dive deep into the Twin Cities enrollment in particular. First, note the timeframe on this graph. Here, we are tracking enrollment every five years up until 2020, and then every year thereafter. Note that the number of students from reciprocity states has significantly decreased since 2005 and has been stable for roughly the past decade at just over 4,000. As a reminder, fall 2020 was the first pandemic year, so we saw drops in international and NRNR enrollments that are only now recovering. This slide is the same slide but showing enrollment percentages instead of raw numbers. Wanted to put it there to let you know that the story is essentially the same by percentage. This figure, said we like graphs, this figure compares us with our public Big Ten peers. As you can see, we are just about even. These are the percentages of new freshmen in-state, or who are paying rather in-state rates. The figure compares us with the Big Ten peers. As you can see, we are just about even with Rutgers on the percentage of students who are paying resident tuition and much higher than most of our other peers. Note that Rutgers also receives 21% of its budget from the state, and we receive roughly Finally, as we know, Wisconsin students make up a higher percentage of our student body than Minnesota students make up of Madison's student body. But we also enroll more Wisconsin students at Twin Cities by headcount than we send to Madison. No doubt, you see the large surge.
Can you say that again, please?
Certainly, certainly. So from other data, we know that Wisconsin students represent a higher percentage of our enrollment than Minnesota students represent of Madison's enrollment. But then the numbers also true.
You can see that in the blue bars here.
Okay, so use Minnesota, the golden blue, so explaining that if you can.
Right, so the maroon bars for most and the gold bar for Minnesota is the number of in-state students we enroll. Again, new freshmen, not all enrollment. The blue is the percentage of their student body that represents reciprocity.
Those are for coming from Wisconsin.
Exactly, so for us, 16.5% from Wisconsin, for Wisconsin, 10% from Minnesota. But Wisconsin's student body is larger, and so the number of students from Wisconsin to the Twin Cities is larger numerically, 973, than the number of Minnesota students to Wisconsin-Madison at 835.
Essentially, it's not just a matter of percentages, but it's also a matter of absolute headcount. So no doubt on the lovely graph there, you see that large surge in Wisconsin enrollment at the Twin Cities in the early 2000s. Due to the specifics of the reciprocity agreement with Wisconsin at that time, it was actually cheaper for a Wisconsin resident to attend the Twin Cities campus than it was for a Minnesota resident to attend the Twin Cities campus. The renegotiation of the reciprocity agreement in 2006, shown on the timeline earlier, corrected this imbalance, and we have since returned to a situation much closer to normality. So with that, I will hand the presentation back to Vice Provost Singh to discuss recent changes in the reciprocity framework.
Thank you. In December of 2023, the South Dakota Board of Regents terminated the reciprocity agreement with the State of Minnesota at the end of the 2023-24 academic year. This decision of theirs was influenced by the enactment of the North Star Promise in Minnesota. It led to the South Dakota Board of Regents expanding the Dakota Advantage Program. That program eliminated the non-resident tuition for Minnesota residents attending South Dakota institutions. Other states that were included in that agreement, in that program, are North Dakota, Montana, Wyoming, Colorado, Nebraska, Iowa, Illinois, and Wisconsin. Students from all these states will not pay a non-resident tuition at South Dakota. Thus, beginning of fall of 2024, Minnesota residents will begin paying South Dakota resident tuition rate to attend South Dakota colleges, as compared with the prior reciprocity agreement in which they were paying the Minnesota resident tuition rate at comparable institutions, which was higher. Beginning fall of 2025, South Dakota students will start paying a Minnesota non-resident rate when they choose to come and attend the Twin Cities campus of the University of One more change that we'd like to bring up is recently, Wisconsin moved their oversight of the reciprocity agreement for four-year colleges from the state's Higher Education AIDS Board to the University of Wisconsin Systems Office. Oversight for the two-year colleges still remain with the state. As mentioned before, the Office of Higher Education has recently concluded, this is the Minnesota Office of Higher Education, has recently concluded mediation across interstate payments. And I'll hand it back, the presentation back to Provost Croson to discuss these payments and to conclude.
In addition to the implications of reciprocity on the universities involved, reciprocity agreements involve states making payments to each other. Succinctly describing how those payments are calculated is difficult and would take much more time than we have here, but there are details that are available in the Minnesota Office of Higher Education report in your docket. Generally speaking, the charges to and from each state are calculated and netted out. The net payment in the last few years has flowed from Wisconsin to the Minnesota State's General Fund. That's because there are more Wisconsin students coming here than going there, and from Minnesota to North Dakota. The university doesn't receive these payments. What we receive is the tuition paid by the students. These payments flow to and from the state's budgets. A few other, yeah?
Can you just ask me a clarifying question on that?
Yeah.
On that payment from Wisconsin, is that the payment for the University of Minnesota students?
That's the whole state.
The whole state, thank you.
A few other nuances you should know about reciprocity. First, when a Minnesota student chooses a reciprocity institution or any out-of-state institution, they can't receive state-based or University of Minnesota-based aid. We have focused this presentation on undergraduate education, but there is a complicated landscape of reciprocity for graduate and professional programs. There, let's just say it's not consistent across the board, it's a lot of. Finally, what is the role of the Board of Regents in reciprocity? So administratively, the Minnesota statute authorizes the Minnesota Office of Higher Education to enter into tuition reciprocity agreements in consultation with the Commissioner of Minnesota Management and Budget and each Minnesota Public Post-Secondary Governing Board. State laws provide a general framework of the tuition reciprocity agreements, but most of the program's details are specified in the Office of Higher Education's administratively negotiated interstate agreements, including provisions about tuition levels charged to reciprocity students. Because these reciprocity agreements are between the states, the university is not a party to those agreements, and so we can't modify those agreements. That said, the Minnesota Constitution and the university charter vest the Board of Regents with a power to regulate and prescribe tuition and fees. This means that the board must approve our participation in any reciprocity agreement if it wants our campuses to participate. So we hope we've provided you with some context, as well as the current state of reciprocity. We believe that reciprocity attracts strong students from neighboring states, especially from Wisconsin to Minnesota, many of whom stay after graduating. It is an important benefit to the citizens of the state of Minnesota and Wisconsin and carries implications for the state budget. But reciprocity comes with costs, many of which are borne by the university. And as you saw in our peer comparison, it makes us somewhat of an outlier in terms of our student population and the revenue that we collect from tuition. So thank you, Chair Mayron, members of the board. We are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, President Croson.
Chair Mayron, if I might just add one comment before we open it up to questions, if you could go back to the graph with the blue and the yellow side for just one moment.
Sure.
That one. For me, this is the most straightforward slide in this very complicated landscape that perhaps you all know, but we're all getting a little bit up to speed on the nuanced rules and complexity of this. But when we look, this slide really demonstrates, the team said it one way and I'm going to say it the other way. So the maroon bars and our bars there are the students, the percent of students for which we are receiving in-state tuition. So when we look overall at our budget, all our peers, from Oregon and indeed to Wisconsin there, have a much larger percent of students, these are state schools, they are land-grant schools, that are accepting students that will pay full freight out-of-state tuition. And so I just want us to understand our peer landscape and then for us to understand the complexity of the situation. With much gratitude, this is a very complex first probably of many conversations.
So just to follow up on that, let's use Rutgers as an example at 85.7%. So what is that saying? Rutgers is receiving what? What does that mean?
Rutgers has 85.7% of their students are paying in-state tuition, and the 15%, 14% of their students are paying out-of-state tuition. And I believe the team made the comment with that Rutgers also has perhaps the highest I have heard state support, which is obviously directly tied to these ratios, so at 21%.
And at the flip side, then, Oregon is getting 42.3% in-state tuition?
As a public land grant in Oregon, they have 42% of students that are in-state students paying in-state tuition.
And then presumably, the balance is out-state tuition or non-resident tuition, which is higher?
Correct, correct.
Okay, and so extrapolating that then to the impact with Minnesota, again, we're getting 68.3% in-state tuition? Is that what the gold is meaning?
Chair Mayron, so of our incoming freshman class, 68.3% were in-state students, so they were paying in-state tuition. 16.5% were reciprocity students, so they were also paying in-state tuition even though they are coming from a different state. And then the remainder are coming from a state, a non-reciprocity state or international or some else.
Okay, so that's what the cost is to, so in other words, in-state tuition total then between our reciprocity agreement and those who are residents and paying resident tuition is, looks like about 84%, 85%?
Yeah, we're just under Rutgers.
Just under Rutgers. Okay. All right, now let's have some follow-up questions. We're going to start with Tad Johnson first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I was curious about this because it came up last year, somebody was providing testimony in front of us about, you know, how to improve the university's budget by charging, you know, by having more out-state students paying out-state tuition. It sounds like this decision gets made by the state, but is there a trend nationally to not have these reciprocity agreements? And if we didn't have one, what would that do for us financially? Didn't have any reciprocity agreements.
Chair Mayron, Regent Johnson, so let's start with the trend. So there are a couple of other consortia that have reciprocity agreements. The Southern Regional Education Board has something called an Academic Common Market. The New England Board of Higher Education has a tuition board, and there's a third one, the Western Interstate Commission for Higher Education, which has their own board. Mostly, those agreements are limited to specific majors that the other campuses do not offer. So they're not, I mean, this is a broad generalization, and it's not going to be true if you dig any deeper, but generally, each campus can decide which majors it will offer in-state tuition for. That can become very complicated for students, right, and families to figure out what it's going to be, and what happens if you change your major, you know, that becomes a whole discussion. I think our reciprocity agreement is probably among the most comprehensive in the sense that it covers all the universities, all the majors, all the public universities, all the majors, all the things. What would happen if we pulled out of reciprocity? So that's a little challenging question to answer. So the first question would be, well, would we lose these Wisconsin students, or would they still come and pay the higher level of tuition? So we'd have to figure out, you know, a projection about that, and we'd have to think about what data that would be. But then it also, of course, depends on, do we have a smaller entering class, at which point we're not collecting any of that revenue? Do we expand our proportion of in-state students, right, the base bar there, at which point there's no financial impact? Or do we recruit and accept more NRNR, non-reciprocity, non-resident, and/or international students, right? So the financial implications are really going to depend on kind of what the adjustment is to the decision. I'll also add that we care about things in addition to tuition, we care about the quality of the students, their preparation, so I would want to think about what this would do to the quality of the incoming class, right, to their achievements. And then finally, there's the kind of fundamental question about what kind of university we want to be. I'll also say, as I mentioned before, if there's some decisions about reciprocity that we, the university, take or the state of Minnesota might take, as what happened in South Dakota, Wisconsin would likely also make a decision, just as we did when South Dakota pulled out, and that would have implications for Minnesota families who seek to send their children to Wisconsin universities. And of course, all of that would have implications on the state budget transfers. So I think those are all considerations to think about.
Quick question before I turn to the next person, Regent Kanyanya, and that is, looking again at this bar, the 16.5% that are coming from Wisconsin, they are paying our Minnesota residential rate. Is our Minnesota residential tuition rate lower than Wisconsin's residential rate, or is it higher?
Thank you, Chair Mayron. So I want to be clear, these are not just Wisconsin students. This includes all the reciprocity states.
Okay.
And the agreement specifies that the student pays the higher of the campus to which they're going's in-state resident rate or their own state's in-state resident rate. Now, which resident rate you pay, there's a complicated match of university to university, and that gets a little bit weedy. But that change, I think, was made in response to this bubble in the 2000s. So it turns out at the moment that our Minnesota's, well, Twin Cities' in-state resident rate is higher than Wisconsin's resident rate, and so the Wisconsin students are paying the Minnesota rate, but that's not the rule. The rule is you pay whichever's higher.
Got it. Okay, Regent Kanyanya.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two quick questions. And just to clarify, on this chart, for the other schools besides Minnesota and Wisconsin, that percentage is not in-state students, it's in-state tuition, right? We don't know.
Chair Mayron, Regent Kanyanya, these are in-state students. This is based on the home state of the student.
Okay, all right, understood. Thank you. And then for South Dakota, so after terminating the reciprocity, they then expanded this Advantage Program, which I see Minnesota listed on. So am I correct in understanding that at least from that end, the net effect was nothing? And there's still reciprocity from their end?
Chair Mayron, Regent Kanyanya, not quite. So the first thing is that their South Dakota Advantage Program charges students from residents in these states the South Dakota tuition level. Before, the students were paying, from last answer, the maximum of the two. So there is a difference in how much those students were paying. And also, they expanded the states that were covered here beyond just the reciprocity agreement states. So it was kind of a change in multiple dimensions, but it did involve them withdrawing from the reciprocity agreement in its entirety, at which point, as Vice Provost Singh suggested, we also we also stopped offering reciprocity tuition for South Dakota students.
Right. So, just as a quick follow-up on that, then is currently is South Dakota's in-state tuition lower than Minnesota's?
Yes.
So, it's very attractive for Minnesota students to, if they want to pay lessened tuition than they would as a resident here to go to South Dakota for now?
For now. So, the 23, 24 tuition rates, so last year's, well, this year's tuition rates charged to Minnesotans is 9,423 to University of South Dakota, 9,298 to South Dakota State. That's about $1,500 less than it was last year. So, there's somewhat of a drop. Crookston and Morris tuition were already 3,000-ish a year higher, now they're 4,000-ish a year higher, 4,500, than South Dakota. And of course, the Twin Cities campus remains several thousand dollars higher.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
We will call on our speakers anytime.
Thank you.
Please.
Just, just a little bit of an add there that when Minnesota students go to North Dakota, even though the tuition is lower, they lose the benefit of-
South Dakota or North Dakota?
South Dakota, I'm sorry. I apologize. When they go to South Dakota, they lose the benefit of all the financial aid that the state offers to them. So, the North Star promise and things like that. And that was the reason that South Dakota was worried because we had, the state of Minnesota had started this North Star promise. And that was the reason we believe that South Dakota's worried they lose enrollment and that's why this withdrew from reciprocity and started the advantage program.
I see. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up on that?
Yeah.
Just really quickly.
Go ahead and then we'll go to Regent Hips.
Just to turn that on its head a little bit, I want to make sure I'm understanding this. So, South Dakota terminated the reciprocity agreement and then listed a bunch of states that will now pay resident tuition in South Dakota. In the mirror image of that, by terminating the reciprocity agreement, South Dakota students no longer qualify to pay the resident tuition rate in Minnesota, but for us approving for 2024, South Dakota students still paying the lower of the rates, right? Because we, we did something special at, at, last spring, basically to hold those South Dakota students who'd accepted at the University of Minnesota harmless for the action taken by the South Dakota Board of Regents. But then going forward, they're now subject to non-resident rates, which makes South Dakota, staying in a South Dakota school even more attractive to them.
Yeah, Chair Mayron, Regent Verhaelen is exactly right. We, we grandfathered in, of course, anyone who's already enrolled. Because the South, state of South Dakota made this decision so late, we said if you've already, you know, if you're coming this fall, we're going to let you come with this tuition.
But if they, they came in there, freshmen, starting as the sophomore, they're going to be, they're no longer going to have that benefit?
No, we grandfathered in everybody who was already enrolled.
All the way through four years of attendance here? Oh, so they're grandfathered in for their fall year?
We didn't, we didn't want to.
Okay.
But next year's incoming class was different.
But next year's incoming class, we're not.
Okay. Regent Hips?
Thank you, Chair. So, the way I'm reading this, 85% are paying in-state for us. And when I look at Wisconsin and Iowa, they're around 50 on average if you take the two, okay? So, the opportunity cost that Dr., Vice Provost Singh was talking about is about 30% of our 6, 55,000 students that, that, so we're talking a really, really, really big number potentially. And, you know, if you, if you do that many out-of-state students, you might have some repercussions, you would think, from the legislature and residents or whatever. But, Wisconsin isn't having a problem with it in Iowa and there are two peers. And you can't really compare, I don't think, South Dakota, North Dakota because it's, they're not our one, you know? So, boy, that's a huge number. I can see why we're talking about this, you know, it's a-
That's why we put it on our work.
I mean, it's got to be in the hundreds of millions.
Regent Hips, I just want to be clear that Iowa is a very special case. There's only one reciprocity agreement, it's with a community college. It's not really instant, right? Exactly. But absolutely, Wisconsin has, I think the perception anyways, has decreased the number of Minnesota students that they maybe have taken. There have been some, you know, activities there and of course, they have many fewer in-state students than we do as well.
President Cunningham, you got a comment?
Yeah, Chair, Chair Mayron and to follow up with Regent Hips, you know, if we look at most of those schools, the ones that are below us there on in-state, on in-state students, there's a philosophy there around being a public land grant and having a majority or aiming for a majority of students from the state. And that's a, that's the, that's the unwritten philosophy around those, whether it's 51 or 52 or 46, you know, that's the philosophy around those pieces there. I also want to add, we'll be talking a lot about enrollment this year and I'm really grateful to have, welcome to our new Vice Provost of Enrollment for the Twin Cities campuses. We'll be having many conversations about enrollment across the system. And this a reminder, these are, this is really about a Twin Cities focus because the tuition rates are very similar on the other campuses. But in addition to the states that we have reciprocity with, there are 40 other states in the country and a lot of national talent. We offer a great, we heard this morning, the national product that we have and the national reputation we have.
Regent Turner, you're up next.
All right. First of all, did North Dakota, the very day that our North Star went into effect, did they, the very next day, come up with the other one? Just a, my-
That's a sarcastic comment.
South Dakota, no, they, they, I think it was in the-
It's South Dakota.
Well, South Dakota, yeah, it is, okay.
So, my next question is, are we turning away students from these 40 other states that we should, I get it that we had land grant and, and the legislature would love, supposedly because of that wants us to be educating, you know, bring as many Minnesota students in. However, on the other side of that little balancing act is, they're not acting like Rutgers.
Okay.
If they were acting like Rutgers, then we could just focus on pulling in all of our, just Minnesota. And so, whenever this philosophy was started, many moons ago maybe, this whole, this perception, the way I see it with the legislature, is they're not following that same perception. They're not holding up their end of the deal to any legislators that are listening. No, seriously.
Yeah.
And so, first question, are we turning away the outer, the, the other states that could be paying higher tuition?
Sure. Chair Mayron, Regent Turner, so, we turn away lots of students every year, many of whom are very qualified. So, let's just start with that. I think if the board wanted to direct us to a strategy that involved more NRNR or even more international students, we could do that. I don't know that we would do that in a year, but we could do that over time. And it would require additional resources in recruitment, right, having agents elsewhere, maybe some, you know, strategic financial aid. So, one of the things I'm very happy about Vice Provost Need is that he's coming not only from the UC system, which operated as a system, so I think he can help us there, but also from a private university where there was a lot more of that kind of focus and activity, right? So, so I think we could, again, not necessarily all in one year, and it would require some additional investment.
I'm hearing a, an intake from my-
Chair Mayron and Regent Turner to follow up on that. So, there's lots of ways that one achieves and we'll hear much more from Vice Provost Need this year over, you know, desired mix of students. And those are enrollment strategies. Enrollment strategies, as, as our provost is saying, involve recruitment strategies and recruitment strategies involve where we put our resources to do those kinds of recruitment. So, we can have a lot more conversations. To your first point of it, you know, how did this sort of philosophy land and what you have here? If you look at any one of those bars, all of those bars changed over the past 15 years as all of those schools had declining state support. So, across the country, state support went from 50, 40, 30% at all of these institutions down to where it's landing now, which is somewhere between 5% and Rutgers at the highest at 20. And with that, these bars move this way overall.
This way, meaning fewer and fewer-
Fewer and fewer in-states, instead of saying in-state students, more and more out-of-state students.
So, if I may, as a follow-up, that, that, that whole philosophy is obviously in the bygone days. And that if the states, all of the states, all included, except for New Jersey, I understand, who is still doing their part, then why should we as higher, higher education, why should we honor this, this philosophy? If the states aren't doing their part?
Well, I'm legislature.
I think the, uh, schools that are public schools, schools that are land-grant schools, I think we all feel that strong mission towards the state. I think the other universities have all grappled with how you continue to provide, you know, the experience that they need to provide in a declining budget, you know, situation. And so, there's a certain ways that schools have tried to figure that out. This is one of the ways that schools have tried to figure this out. I don't know that it's the right way here, I just want to say really clearly, it's, you know, I just, we, we think it's important for you to understand what our peers are doing, what these rules are, how they apply, how they're made, how they influence us. And then it's, there's lots of different ways we can decide who we want to be and how we want to pay for it.
All right. Regent Kanyanya and then Regent Verhaelen.
I don't remember what I was going to say. Come back to me.
I'm going to go to Regent Verhaelen and then one second.
No, I was listening like very intently, yes.
All right, Regent Verhaelen.
Mine is a pretty straightforward question. On this slide, as you were speaking, I want to make sure I heard the numbers correctly. So, for Rutgers, 21% of their overall budget comes from the state and for University of Minnesota Twin Cities, it's 16%? Did I hear those numbers correctly?
Chair Mayron, Regent Verhaelen, yes, that is correct.
I just, just for my own brain's sake-
21 and 16.
Thank you. And but-
System, system, system.
Okay. Thank you. But if we look at the overall resident tuition rates that are being paid, comparing ourselves to Rutgers, we're about the same percentage of the student body is paying a resident rate. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. So, I will ask the que, I, I am picking up on what Regent Turner has said. Whatever the rationale for reciprocity was back, put in place back in '73 under Wendell Anderson, seems to me doesn't apply anymore. And I, I will just put out there, I don't, I, I'm not seeing the reasons that we would continue being, offering reciprocity. And I realize that that creates a challenge then as we, whether it's Wisconsin or what school, to attract the students we want to attract and to have them pay non-residential rate. But I'm, I, I'm just not seeing the benefit any longer of it doing reciprocity and I'm seeing the cost to the university in, particularly in this situation where we, we're not going to get more from the legislature, it will continue to go down. I just don't see how we can keep doing this and having nearly 85%, 86% of our student body paying residential rate makes no sense to me in this day and age. So, I'm going to put that out there and I'd like to test peoples, you know, where your appetites are on this because I think part of this working session is for us to give some direction and a sense to the administration about where to go with this. So, I'll put that out there. Regent Kanyanya, we'll back. Apparently you remember what you want to ask and then we'll go to Regent Gully.
But does he still remember?
It's the old age. Okay, so I apologize. Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I mean, good discussion and Regent Turner, you pose a, a good question. I think to some extent, we've, we've kind of talked about it. You know, and I, like President Cunningham said, that, you know, there is just that sense that we have at, at the university, that this is the University of Minnesota. You know, I think we obviously have to react to realities and maybe what's happening at the legislature, but you know, no, regardless of what they do, that doesn't really change my opinion of what this institution is and the kind of equity the, the, the public, if you will, has in the institution, you know, since 1851. With that being said, with the realities we're looking at, if we were talking about maybe increasing NRNR, I, I definitely would want to be looking in the, in the blue box, you know, before we get to the gold. And, and I think, I mean, that is the discussion we're having, I just want to say it explicitly. Yeah, I just want to say it explicitly. Because, because then I think that doesn't really put us at a question of, are we serving the state? You know, we're just talking about that blue box. Now, with that being said, the other thing I'd, one thing that's been clear, you know, just in this presentation and in previous conversations, there's a lot of domino effects and it's, it's complicated, well, South Dakota, okay, and then this, and then what does it mean for that student versus that student? One thing I would say as we just approach the, the thought, the conversation, we're obviously not putting forward any action here, is to communicate with and think together with Minnesota State. I say that because, again, like, we're committed to the welfare of the state and they're a huge part of that. That, you know, they're a huge part of this, you know, training the workforce and educating the state. And seeing how complicated this is, who knows, you know, what this versus that ha, you know, means for them? Again, we're obviously, we have to think of the U of M, but it, it would just be, I think it'd be probably prudent to, to, to think of the, the state as well as we think of our institution.
Yeah. And a quick question along that line and then Provost Crowson. Do we have any information on Minnesota State student population in terms of what percentage are actual residents paying resident tuition versus non-residents in a reciprocity state paying a non-resident, I'm sorry, paying our resident tuition?
Yeah, Chair Mayron, Regent Kanyanya, so, my understanding is that Minnesota State does not charge differential resident or non-resident tuition, the same, at least for the two-year colleges.
Two years.
Right. The same way that Crookston and Rochester don't. I don't have the numbers of reciprocity students at, at the four-year campuses, but we could certainly look at it. I do want to add one hedge here, which is that simply because a student is from an NRNR state does not mean that they are necessarily paying full tuition. We give scholarships, we do discounting, right? There's a whole set of other things. They are almost certainly paying more than an in-state student would pay or in this case, a reciprocity student would pay. But it's not an automatic in-state. So, as we're, you know, if we're going to think about financial modeling, we would want to take that into account as well. And then, you know, I would also just sort of urge, as you all think about what distribution of students you want to have and what policies you are thinking about, to, to think if there's a, a more gentle glide path kind of solution as opposed to an abrupt, we're cutting this off as of next academic year. If we're going to be building up, for example, an out-of-state recruitment arm, that's going to take a year or so to get up and running and I'd hate to put us in a position where, you know, 17% of our students were suddenly snatched away and we didn't, you know, have people to fill those in with.
Good point. Good point. Regent Gully?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you so much, speakers. I, I'm struck by, I, I feel like I have a lot of thoughts and I wasn't really prepared to take up a conversation on immediately ending reciprocity at this moment, which I know is not quite what's happening, but I just want to say, I, you know, I really think of reciprocity as being a way that we serve not only the state of Minnesota, but the whole region. And if I were thinking about college in the next few years, I would be really, uh, might be really surprised to know that we were like considering ending reciprocity. I think that's a really, I, I think that's a conversation that has like a lot of implications as, I mean, I know we've expressed, but I think something that we should take really seriously, not only have with Minnesota State if we're going to have that in the Minskew system, but also I'd be curious to know what our impact is, has been on the state of, you know, and I, I know that we're like saying we're not getting enough support from the legislature, but this is one of the, probably the most significant ways that we recruit people from the region to come and live in Minnesota and be part of our economy and stay here. And we have a particular draw here with the, you know, with our universities, it's a good way to get people to come and then stay in Minnesota. And we have some things that like we know are really compelling for people in the region, right? Like North Dakota does not have any cities like the Twin Cities or even really like Duluth or Rochester. We have some of these things, but we have to have a way to bring people in. And this is one of the most significant, I think, I mean, I'd be interested to know the sort of overall impact of the University of Minnesota. I mean, I'd be interested to know the sort of overall impact of the University of Minnesota on bringing people into our state, but I feel like it's one of the most significant ways that we do that. And I don't believe that, but I'd be curious if we have better information about this. And apologies if I missed this in the presentation, 'cause I know I had to come in a little bit late, but, um, I'd be curious to know, um, uh, just like, you know, what the impact is on our region and whether, and what, you know, how likely we are to keep those students. It's one thing to say, oh, well, we'll just get, um, you know, we do turn students away and, oh, maybe we will just like get different students, but I think we'll lose a lot of the students from the region who come here because of reciprocity. And does that matter? You know, if suddenly all of our exchange stu- or not, exchange students, all of our incoming students are students who can just pay full tuition, that's a very different group of people than the people that we get with reciprocity. Um, so I, I'm, you know, I, you know, and the last thing that I'll say and then I'll let someone else talk, but is just that I, I was really very surprised when this decision came out from South Dakota without them having a conversation with us. So I don't think that this is a decision that we should make without having really good conversations with the other, you know, especially like the other universities that are part of this.
If I may.
Yes.
Chair Mayron and, and Regent Gully, this was meant to be the first conversation about what is reciprocity? What are the rules? I didn't know the rules. There's these odd things back and forth that partly was sparked, the conversation is sparked today by the fact that South Dakota did something. Many of you had questions about that. What does it mean? Which sparks why reciprocity and what these different pieces are? Um, to, to follow up on Provost Krosen's thought, um, students, regardless of the state they come from, come from a variety of income levels. And, um, by no means are, is, is there any implication here that we would only be accepting financial students from a certain component, right? There's scholarships, there's financial aid that they get from all kinds of different components. Also, we don't know, which is why this, it, it's not presented more fully, the economic modeling is difficult. People do still tend to go to regional s- to schools in the region. People in Wisconsin know Minnesota better. We likely will still get, regardless of what happened, many students from neighboring states. We might get also some different students. Har- hard to know. I expect there's still Minnesota students. If, if the board moved forward with this in some years from now, would also still go to Wisconsin regardless of, I mean, that's the kind of way those pieces go. So I wouldn't tie the type of student and financial components necessarily to the, um, uh, in entirely to the, um, to, to, to the region. The other part there is, um, we definitely attract students with a national reputation and we're a tal- talent magnet. I don't think that changes with this conversation, 'cause the sixty-eight point three percent of students that are in-state here, um, uh, is, um, we're not looking at changing that, which means regardless, there's other students coming in and those students, because it's an amazing city and a great place to live and other places don't have cities like, like this in the same way, you know, would very also likely stay. Predicting those things is, you know, that's a, a little bit of a wild card.
Can I, if you don't mind, just as a conversational item, just, um, so push back just a little bit on the question about, uh, whether we'd get the same economic diversity in our students if we didn't have reciprocity. And I just, you know, I realize that like, you know, I've, I've been through the facile of times. I know how it works and, and, uh, we'll go through it with my kids in a few years and so, you know? Um, and so of course, like, you know, it comes as a whole package. So the sticker price isn't the ultimate price that families are paying and we all know that, but that doesn't mean that it means nothing to families when they see a sticker price of, let's just say thirty thousand dollars instead of, you know, fifteen thousand dollars. Even if their needs would be met in other ways, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't lose people who just don't apply because they look at it and they go like, you know, and their families go like, no way, we can't afford it, we're not, you can't apply there.
Regent Gully, I can't, I can't agree, um, more with that. Our priority here for affordability is most certainly to this, the people of Minnesota.
Of course. Yeah. Yeah.
And I think when, that's always going to be true for accessibility and affordability. And while there's commitment to, all these schools have commitment to broad affordability across, across their student bases, in a place without endless resources, um, uh, the priority is with the state. And I just want you to hear that priority doesn't change here for an affordable, accessible education for the people of Minnesota.
Yeah.
All right. Regent Hipsch and Regent Turner will follow.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. So I agree with you on the, your comments about reciprocity and I agree with sixty-eight point three percent of what you said. So, um, when I look at this, I think, okay, that our commitment is to Minnesota in more ways than just in-state students. It's also to the eighteen Fortune five hundred companies or whatever we have, seventeen and eighteen next year. I mean, the world is, is flat. The world is our, the world is our, I mean, the world is our, where we sell. I mean, we sell to all fifty states, we sell to hundreds of countries around the world. And so we need, we need that workforce differently maybe than a lot of the M-State schools that are, are, um, are educating for more of a regional approach. And so I think that, you know, I think that there's huge opportunity to, you know, we're talking about work, workforce initiatives and getting our workforce more money, that sixteen and a half percent is a huge amount of, uh, revenue that's opportunity for us to, to do some really big things. So, I mean, I know this is the first discussion and we're gonna do a deep dive into it, but right now that's where I'm sitting, so.
Regent Turner and then Regent Wheeler.
Thank you, Chair Mayron.
Oh, I'm sorry. Provost Krosen, you had a response. I, I just think you, uh, Chair Mayron, Regent Hipsch, I just wanted to come back to this, uh, which I think is exactly right, that our commitment is to Minnesota students. But I also want to add, uh, kind of reiterate a response I gave to Regent Johnson, that some of those Minnesota students want to go to school in Wisconsin and ultimately this might make it more expensive to do that. Certainly the South Dakota Board, when they made their decision, that was the audience they heard from most vehemently, was the South Dakota students who had planned to go to university or wanted to go to universities in Minnesota and suddenly found it much more expensive.
Well, then I have to follow up. I look at Wisconsin under graph. Okay, so they're doing both.
They're doing both, although again.
Okay. I mean, so it's like.
The numbers and the percentages are a little bit.
So they're getting a huge lot more of, uh, NR NR, whatever you call it, right there. So.
Okay. Uh, Regent Tur- well, you know what? I'm gonna do Regent Wheeler first and then Regent Turner, only because Regent Wheeler hasn't spoken yet. A couple of times.
Some of my family always says, but anyway, so, you know, I'm, I really appreciate this 'cause like most things, you know, there's, there's a lot more complexity than the farther way you get, the easier it looks to do, right? So there's, you've, you've shown us all the hydraulics at play that are complex. And this is clearly something I think we have to consider, has to be a lever to consider and what's our philosophy? I guess I'm wondering what the next steps are in terms of looking at this more deeply? The implications that someone brought up around the table, the financial modeling, the, how do we make, how, where our optionality in terms of choices and things like that? How do we get to that next place? So we can, you know, 'cause we're gonna have to have some choice-making around this clearly. So that's my, that's my question, is, this is clearly important to us, clearly a lever. We understand a little bit more of the complexity. We have to address this and think about a, a more, a, a more modern perspective than, than maybe we've had in the last, uh, you know, since it's been looked at last. And how do we get there? How do we get there next?
Regent Topp. Uh, Provost Krosen or President Cunningham?
So Regent Wheeler, Chair Mayron, we were going to have many conversations over the year over, about enrollment and enrollment strategies. Seeing budgets also later this afternoon. So I think it's, some of these conversations can be woven into overall thinking about enrollment and, and it's good that we now have sort of a shared understanding about this and we can think about it as a, as a lever. We're also gonna be doing strategic planning. I think this partly fits into sort of those, you know, who, who we are and how, what we want to do, um, and then how we pay for what we want to do. Um, but I think it's important as a first step to know whether we choose to take it or not, this is a lever. Other universities have taken this lever. We may not decide it's a lever for us. Um, we can try to do some more modeling. The questions are, are somewhat unknown, right? So it will be.
Have to make some assumptions, yeah.
A lot of assumptions. I, I, I suppose we can try to do some of that modeling and present some of those different assumptions, um, but we would just have to know how wide the confidence interval is on them. We also could look to our peer institutions, who definitely took some of this strategy over the last years and I try to understand what it meant for them in early years out. Open to other ideas from my amazing team.
Chair Mayron, um, Regent, uh, Turner, so, sorry, Regent Wheeler. So yes, um, uh, you know, again, I think there's a lot of different options that we can consider. Um, I think the, the board has never, at least to my knowledge, never officially set targets for the distribution of students. We could discuss that. We could talk about some of these other types of arrangements that we see in these other states, like perhaps there's a more limited version of reciprocity just around majors that aren't offered in the home institution, right? So it doesn't have to be bang, bang, zero, a hundred percent, right? There could be some, and again, I would, I would urge some kind of continuity glide path there, but there, there could be some options to consider that are not simply keep or don't keep.
Yes, Regent Wheeler.
Just a follow-up comment to Chair Mayron. Thank you. So I appreciate, appreciate that. And I think that what you've done is raise this to a level of intentionality so that when it's woven in those other things, that we now have an awareness of this being an issue and something that we need probably to intentionally address. So thank you.
Uh, Regent, uh, Turner?
Thank you.
And then I'll go to Regent Davenport.
Did you want to go first, Mary?
Just a matter.
You have a smoke.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Regent Davenport.
Okay.
She's yielding you two for the smoke.
Yeah, 'cause now I think my points are woven in with other points. Um, I think it's not just a question about tuition and we can't look at it that way. And the fact that what was brought up, uh, students stay in Minnesota when they graduate. That's huge for us, to both your points. If I'm investing, I'd be investing in national recruitment and international recruitment rather than maybe fussing with reciprocity. Um, and, um, looking at maybe more net costs because there's different aid available, which really makes a difference. And then as we're looking at the structure of reciprocity, what, um, I was reminded of and kind of always surprises me is how much we defer to the Minnesota Office of Higher Ed versus, um, figuring it out for our needs and our goals.
Thank you. All right. Regent Turner.
All right. Thank you, Chair Mayron. I knew there was a reason to let you go first. Uh, just to reiterate some of, but, you know, we had some really marvelous presentations today, that I have way more confidence in those various presentations drawing people to Minnesota. We start with the fact that we're, we have six health sciences that are, from what President Cunningham is saying, uh, is, has, is working together and has a partnership that unlike any other. And then the fact that if our, their plan gets off and running, that's gonna add to the appeal of people wanting to come to those six schools, correct? 'Cause they're gonna want to be a part of something that's gonna be potentially really great here in Minnesota. And then we have the, the presentation about the whole private sector and working with all those companies. I have way, and then the international. So those three together, I have way more confidence in that, in drawing and, and people going despite costs, we will find a way because Minnesota, the University of Minnesota is the place to be because of so many exciting things. I have more confidence in that because when I'm looking at all your wonderful graphs and that, just the overall effect of it, it seemed to me that there's more people going out with this reciprocit- reciprocity than coming in. Am I right on that or?
Chair Mayron, Regent Turner. So there's more students going out than coming in to all four-year institutions combined. But we do receive more stu- the Twin Cities campus receives more students from Wisconsin than University of Wisconsin-Madison receives from Minnesota. So just to be clear, and, and those numbers are not very far off, right? But, but the, the number of students transferring back and forth is pretty balanced. That's not the case for all four-year universities, right?
As a follow-up, I stand by the fact of what we have to offer in innovative, uh, things that no other state, well, I shouldn't say that, I don't know. But we have some pretty innovative stuff coming down the pipe here.
Yeah. No, I, I fully agree. We're a phenomenal university.
Yes.
All right. Regent Topp.
Thank you, Chair Mayron. Um, a couple of things. I, really great discussion and I really appreciate it. I think this is the most I've understood about this whole reciprocity thing. So, um, it's really helpful and I think probably, um, the next things that we might want to do just as a board is have a conversation about those value stuff that would guide, um, some, some of the parameters before kind of the modeling. It feels like that's important. I mean, personally, to me, I feel like, um, you know, uh, I, I agree with the sentiment that, um, even though there are opportunities and, um, all across the country for kids to pick universities, most will choose to stay in their home university. Um, and so, um, so being a land-grant and things like, it feels important that we continue to, um, uh, support that, how, however, um, whatever that means. And then to, I also, um, uh, find value in thinking through the regional, um, being a regional university and what that means, like, is there things that we should be thinking more of? And whether that means reciprocity or getting rid of it, but figuring out the attractiveness of the university to regional students or things like that, that would be valuable. And then also the global, um, value, um, that is, do we know what we are good at? We are, you know, um, we are able to then attract from all parts of the country, but also globally. And I feel like, um, it would be helpful to have a discussion on, on those kinds of, um, values or principles before we send staff off to do modeling that could look.
Yeah, fair enough.
Sounds like many different ways, so.
All right. I, I think, um, oh.
Just a question.
Yeah.
May I? Um, on the chart, freshman in and out migration for four-year institutions, does that include privates?
I believe it does. I might have to turn my eyes.
Yeah, I, I think.
Yes, they're nodding. Yes, it does.
So we have many, many privates, more than others. And so to delineate private-public would be helpful, I think.
Yeah. Compared to Wisconsin, that's really quite striking, actually.
Chair, Chair Mayron, may I say one thing?
Yes.
And, and maybe partly to Regent Gully's comment before as well, um, how, how we accomplish this, I, I don't know, but, you know, one general goal for everything we do, I think, is we want university, we want Minnesota students to look really hard at Minnesota. And making it a little bit more of a thinking process on why they would go out of state when we have such a tremendous university here at such an affordable price. I don't know how we have them think harder about it, but everything we can do to have them have to think a little bit, and their families to have to think a little bit harder about it. Uh, you know, the, the, the state where I came from, families in that state thought really hard before they left the state.
Yeah.
Because the state, its state tuition was really wonderful for their pocketbooks. So whatever we can, how we can help our own students think more about this in the state of Minnesota.
I'll be brief.
All right. And then I'll.
I was on the list. Um, can we go back to our favorite slide? Thank you very much.
It's the only one we understand.
It, as Regent Davenport was talking, um, and then kind of getting at, maybe let's temper, you know, how, how we look at this. It, don't, don't, I mean, when we look at that blue, the sixteen point five, we can change that without affecting reciprocity, right? Like reciprocity doesn't put it at that number. That's a, okay. So we can, we can do some of this without blowing it up. It's, my, okay.
So I, I think your honing in on the blue is really important. I, you know, let's assume we're committed to, that our land-grant institution should be predominantly, um, educating our residents and that seventy percent, I would say that, that number for right now sounds like predominant to me and is a number we're not trying to tinker with. It's really the other thirty percent then, um, that, um, we're. It's really the other thirty percent then that we're talking about, who are not residents of the state of Minnesota. And I think getting to Regent Tauri's point, that's where I think we need to get into the more philosophical discussion about what is it we want that mix to be of students? It's a, you know, the world is global, and that we have grand challenges that we have said that we would like to solve at least nationally or internationally. And so what kind of student do we want to draw for that? If there's a regional commitment, some of you are expressing that. That, to me, is, has less appeal than trying to appeal across the United States and beyond. And then with that additional thirty percent, to be honest, I would like to see them pay as much money as they can and not lose them. I'm not interested in trying to, at least as a starter, of giving away resident tuition to those who are not residents of Minnesota. So, but I think that your point about now we're having a discussion about what values are we trying to advance so that the administration then, then you can go out and model and begin to look at different options to address those values, I think that might be a really good next step for our discussion. But I think you're clearly hearing there's an appetite to take a look at what role reciprocity is playing in this, is it helping or hurting? Okay, with that, that concludes our work session. And I guess in fifteen minutes, we'll begin the finance. All right, we have a half hour.